Kenny Davidson's absence, I'm going to chair the meeting this evening. We have some guests that are supposed to arrive and some of us can't see them. Nope. Call the meeting to order and we'll start off with a moment of silence, please. Thank you, and next is to pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, anyone here from the Union School first grade? Nope. Okay. As our typical custom, we've got some students here from West Virginia Wesleyan. We will ask the Wesleyan students to stand, look at the camera, state your name, where you're from, and what your major is. Start up here in the front row.
Hi, I'm Shannon Tolman, I'm a business administration major and I'm from August, West Virginia.
I'm Stephanie Hans, I'm an exercise science major and I'm from Petersburg, West Virginia.
I'm Ashley Richards, I'm from Shady and I'm an accounting major.
I'm Ann Jackson, I'm a biology major and I'm from Union School.
My name's Alex Pugh, I'm a major in accounting and economics and I'm from Buchanan, West Virginia.
My name's Jennifer Smith, I'm from Canada and I'm a business admin major.
My name's Tiffany, I'm from Beverly and I'm a business administration major.
Thank you, and certainly welcome to come back anytime. Glad you're here. Try to keep Mr. Colley in line as well. I believe we have some folks from Union School. Do we have a presentation from them or?
Not that I'm aware of, sir.
Okay.
I'm just a parent of her, I don't know if he keeps coming or what the plan is.
We'll wait a little bit and as soon as she gets here, we'll put you on the agenda. How would that be? Okay? From the sign-in sheet, Winston Moore, you have, you desire to address council?
Yeah, I want to find out what they found out about that junkyard over on my yard.
What do you need to know?
Well, I need to know when they're going to clean it up.
Yeah, we can pressure the owners to try to clean it up, but there's typically very little that we can do beyond that.
Until the residential section over there.
Pardon?
That's the residential over there.
Yes, it is. It's owner occupied.
Well, what's a junkyard doing over there?
Well, I'll go down and take a look at it this week and see if we can get it cleaned up.
Well, the mayor was going to do that just a couple months ago when I was here.
Well, you'd have to ask him that question.
I will, when I see him. But if you've got a junkyard, don't you, you're supposed to have a fence around it.
Yeah, I'm not sure you'd consider that a complete junkyard.
Well, I'd cover the junkyard, there's nine automobiles over there in the yard.
I'll stop by and have to take a look at it.
I sure appreciate it.
Okay.
Let me know what you want to do.
Okay, I'll do that. Anything else we can do for you this evening?
Get rid of the night.
And I sympathize with him too, because it's on my street and I, he and I have talked about this situation for months and we both feel like something needs to be done. Mr. Moore has more of an urgency than I do because he lives right across the street from it.
I'll send you out to eat a meal, I'm going to sit there and look at it.
David, what, our city attorney, what can we do on something like?
I have never had any contact with this property owner since I was young. I'm assuming that our zoning officer has perhaps been in touch with these folks before.
There's only one thing I'm concerned about this, because I've told him. And I can't get nobody to do anything.
If Mr. Clemmons identifies specific violations on his own that are under the housing enforcement grounds, then the property owner is contacted, typically given a period of time to correct, address their issues. If they fail to do that, Mr. Clemmons typically asks me to write a letter. Usually, most of the time between his letter and my letter, we get some compliance with the problems. And I don't know on the pecking order exactly where we are with this particular property.
It's been a, an issue for a number of years. They've received a number of letters over the years. They typically respond for a while and then it kind of drifts back into non-compliance again. Apparently, it's happened again.
I'm sure he don't have license on his junkyard.
You couldn't operate a commercial salvage yard in a residential zone area.
Amen to that, brother.
Well, we have ordinances in regard to vehicles and so forth as far as on property. I just think we need to move it up and get it done. And, you know, maybe the council will direct the city attorney to write a letter and get this taken care of. Because it was, what, two months ago that the same concern was raised?
Yeah, about that.
It's been an ongoing problem for many, many years, since they originally acquired it.
But after the letter, after you submit a letter to them, what does end the course of action at that point in time that they don't comply with?
In order for me to send a letter to the property owner, we would have to identify specific violations under our existing ordinances. Some folks, primarily as a result of maintaining an unkempt property, that is, stuff strewn about their yard, toys, things of that sort, as we have sometimes had folks complain about. There is absolutely nothing, unequivocally, nothing that we can do under either municipal or state law to make people clean up stuff in their yard. If the grass situation is, if it exceeds the eight-inch maximum, as allowed by the zoning ordinance, that's something that's redressable. They can be cited for that. If they have X number of junk cars that are sitting around, oftentimes we see these cars on blocks or things like that for, you know, weeks or months on end. We've been very successful with our abandoned car ordinance of having those kinds of vehicles removed. But if you have somebody that likes to tinker with a car or two, they're a collector, and they work on it here or there, there's nothing we can do to prohibit that.
A car too, yeah. But not mine ever.
Mine is, that's a different situation.
Rich, we have a meeting next Thursday at three for the house.
Sounds like a party.
Could we ask you to make a recommendation on what should be done for that meeting and then pass it on to the city attorney so that, man, I hate to see Mr. Moore come back in two months and say the same thing.
Right.
We need to follow what the ordinance is and so forth, so let's get it done.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Have we asked for a call? Have some folks here from Union School? Winston, don't run over those kids. We have a spokesperson for Union School?
We would like to introduce you to Mrs. Scott and Mrs. Skeet's class, first grade class. We would like to present to you the Giving Tree project. We want to plant trees of flowers for the city park. We, that houses and birdhouses.
We have a group of first graders who would like to take on a service learning project and we are working on a grant as well as some donations. We like to plant roughly about seven trees and some perennials down at the city park and put up a few birdhouses and badhouses this spring.
I think that's an excellent idea. I think we're probably going to ask you to coordinate your efforts with our horticulturist, who's in charge of that, and probably also the parks committee. So they have some ideas in mind in terms of types of trees and locations for the flowers and so on. And I think that's an excellent partnership. The folks have really, I think, earned a spot in all of our hearts in terms of your interest in not only the community but also our environment. Excellent.
Does that mean we need to go?
I just want to make the motion that we approved. The project that's presented via the first grade class from me and the school for our city parks.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Second?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What's the grant that you're, is there a specific grant?
It's through STEM, it's like a science, technology grant. We haven't received it yet, we just, principal and I have written it and submitted it. So they'll provide some money to purchase our trees as well as some of the planting supplies.
And if someone wanted to donate, who would they cut?
Brooks, New England tree, the Giving Tree project.
I think it's great with all the pictures that's drawn.
Yes, wonderful.
Put a lot of hard work in that.
So we gather when you say.
I want to thank all of you for coming and we've prepared some certificates we'll give to the teachers so that you can give them a little reward of their being here tonight.
Still need to go, Rich. We still need to.
Work on it and so on.
Oh.
I don't know anybody that's going to object to that, do you?
I know, but I think it'd be nice to have them here.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We're going to do this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your attendance this evening. You're certainly welcome to stay, but I understand the pressure.
You can choose one, just each one's yours. That's a great chance.
Thank you parents for bringing the children along. Okay, next item on the agenda is department and board reports. Matt Berry, please chief.
Do you have visual aids for this?
Yeah, I do actually, I got, I never let you down. Just to update council on a few things going on with police department, we continue to be pretty busy with a lot of things. Just in case some of you may have been here the last couple Wednesdays and thought that council chambers had turned into a medieval torture chamber, I can assure you it was not. I had, over the last month or so, made the command decision to implement tasers into the police department. We've had a number of incidents over the last several months specifically, but certainly over the years, where our officers have had to go hands-on in a lot of situations when they could have avoided that, could have avoided a lot of, a lot of extra effort. One case in particular, we had an officer get into a struggle with somebody while trying to make an arrest a couple months ago. And during this struggle, he hurt his wrist, so much to the point that he was out, he was off duty for this injury for over a month. So we're seeing incidents of that nature more frequent, like I said, over the last several years specifically, several months. So I made the decision to implement tasers to add just another option, another tool. It's a less lethal option for officers, primarily to keep themselves and others safe, to avoid these types of confrontations that injured one of our officers just a couple of months ago. So we have implemented those, we have underwent training, and they also walk the school on in council chambers over the last couple Wednesdays. So needless to say, it was a shocking experience for our officers, according to plan. But we have been trained, we have implemented policies, we do have the tasers. We have purchased, I have been in consultation with Mr. Dawes when the funding has went into this. We purchased two tasers initially, those are in service right now, and we purchased two more. We will have four. And the idea is we, obviously, four isn't enough to issue to each officer. We have developed a rotation system. These four tasers will be checked out at the beginning of each duty shift for the officers to carry on their shift, with the understanding that they need to check them back in at the station before they close their shift that day, so the next, the one coming shift can use them. We figured that this would still give us the benefit of having enough coverage of these devices with the officers that we have on duty and still maintaining some cost control instead of purchasing a unit for every officer. So those are, those are in effect as of right now. The last time that I met with council, I talked to you about having meetings with Wesleyan College with their volunteers and bringing on interns. And I'm happy to say that we're a very busy place here this fall with our partnership with Wesleyan. We have four students who are with us, two interns from the criminal justice department, gentleman by the name of Lucas Casoli and Ethan Campbell. They've been time riding around with their officers, observing different calls, different functions around the office here to further their criminal justice education. And in addition to that, we have two other students who are service scholars. And as part of their scholarship, they have to volunteer so many hours within the community. And we attended a volunteer fair at the end of August to pitch the police department and we picked up, we had one last year, we picked up two this year. And luckily enough, we're able to diversify them enough to keep them both busy because we've got to guarantee them something to do when they come here. One lady's name is Patricia Sherard. She's actually a history major and it worked out great because I've been looking for a student who is history-minded over the last several years, because I'm kind of a, I guess, an amateur enthusiast of history myself. And one of my pet projects has been to put together a comprehensive history of the police department of the city of Buchanan. So Ms. Sherard has spent her day, she's here three days a week, usually two to three hours each time she comes, and she goes right to the, to the record room and she's been poring through city council minutes. She's been through a lot of the minutes. And she started at the 1853 book and decided that was more of a challenge, so she decided she would come up to the 2000s and work her way back. So she's been going through those and been very diligent at doing that. She's just picking out some highlights of just different things that's happened throughout, throughout our town's history with law enforcement, past chiefs, past events, such as anything from like the Sega Mine disaster to our flood that happened here in 1985, several other big events that have happened throughout history. She's picking out, she's making a timeline. And her next step is to kind of meet, brainstorm and isolate this timeline one more. She's also looking for pictures, I know she's going to be working with the, throughout the community and the historical society, looking for any kind of pictures to support this history. So she's doing a very diligent job and I look forward to seeing her finished product. The second student is Caitlin Brown. And Caitlin Brown is focusing on our youth programs and our outreach programs. And we've got her going on a number of things, obviously with October coming upon us, we have, October's always a busy month for the police department. We have, at the same time generally, the Halloween safety program that we put on for our elementary age students throughout town. And Red Ribbon Week is that week as well. And that, that week focuses on drug and alcohol education. So she's assisting us with preparing, scheduling with the schools and preparing materials that we hand out at that as well. The second project that we have actively worked on right now leads me to the next thing to report on, is a partnership that we have with the middle schools gifted program. Last spring, we had worked with Vicky Sharp, who's the gifted teacher at the middle school, to put on a crime scene class. She wanted her students to have some kind of introduction to what police officers do at crime scenes. So we took a lot of our tools up there and showed them what they look like, how they worked, and actually walked them through a little scenario that myself and Doug Mountain have taught at our, at our college classes in the past. And it was so well received though that she wanted to actually make it into a unit. So we've been meeting with her over the last couple weeks to fine tune this unit. And the unit's going to consist of, again, looking at an officer's approach to a crime scene, actually working through a scenario-based crime scene. And we're going to go a step further and run the gamut of the criminal justice system, so just law enforcement we're going to have an introduction to. Once, once they complete that crime scene, the decisions they make at the crime scene, the actions they take at that crime scene, it's going to have an effect for what comes up in court. They're going to have to actually present this as, as a court case. And we're going to have a long, long trial for them as well. So Caitlin has been very diligent at putting this together. She's had a lot of excellent ideas. In fact, she came up with the idea, the scenario that we're going to use, pitched that to Mrs. Sharp. She's been doing some research on this and putting together a rough curriculum and working very well on that. We look for this to, we have another meeting here in the next week with Mrs. Sharp to just present what Caitlin has put together. And if accepted, we anticipate this to happen as early as October, mid-October, just depending on her calendar. It'll be a nine-week program, roughly a quarter. So that's kept us very busy. The final thing that I have to report to council tonight is my show and tell that I've brought along. About this time every year, we submit what really is in effect an annual report of our highway safety activities throughout the previous year to AAA. AAA East Central, which is located out of Washington, Pennsylvania, covers this area of West Virginia as well. And AAA nationally gives out awards to law enforcement agencies for their highway safety efforts. And it's a combination of everything from enforcement to educational activities. And so we've been participating in this program for a number of years now. And our submission to AAA at this time, again, really equates to an annual report, if you will, of our highway safety activities. Because again, it focuses on everything from our DUI patrols, the checkpoints that we have in relation to these DUI patrols. A lot of our safety activities are Halloween safety programs, where we talk about safe trick-or-treating and pedestrian safety. The traffic school that we have, that we offer folks who have received citations here with the city, we showcase that, some of the different things that we do as a result of this program. Our bicycle safety activities and, you know, really covers the gamut. So we include pictures to show some of our bike activities, our bike patrol takes part in. And we have graphs here to show, you know, that's, our pedestrian fatality rate remains at zero and we're very proud of that. So it covers a lot of things, a lot of materials that we provide students, we make copies of, the coloring books that we hand out that talks about park and safety, city belt safety. So we have this here at city hall, if anyone would desire to look at it, we keep these on file. This results in the awards program that takes place about a month or so from now up in Clarksville. And I don't have to jinx myself or anything this year, but we have historically had a lot of success with this program because of the diverse approach to our highway safety activities. The AAA gives out a number of awards, everything from accommodation, which is just recognizing that you, you know, you're doing something toward the problem, all the way up from bronze, silver, gold, and platinum is the top award that they can give, recognizing that you have identified highway safety problems and issues in your community and you're taking steps to, to solve them and, and have had success with them over time, thus the graphs showing a span of time. We have won the platinum award for at least the last eight years, so we're going for double digits here in the next couple of years, again, I don't have to jinx myself, but, you know, we take a lot of pride in the activities that we do as a police department to outreach and educate the community, not just enforcement-wise, but a lot of the outreach that we do for our programs as well, and that's highlighted in this report. So we keep these on file each year, so if anyone would ever desire, if you're in city hall, feel free to stop by my office or Jessica's desk and peruse this. It's really a good showcase of a lot of the activities that we do, highway safety related. And that's all I have tonight, unless there are questions.
Any questions for me?
I have a question about your taser training. What type of a warning do you give before you tase people?
Well, the training says that, obviously, the warning is a crucial part of the deployment of a taser. We're advised to, you know, a battery of verbal instructions, stop, let me see your hands, taser very clearly, very audibly, those type of warnings.
Are these tasers rechargeable, can be reused?
They, they work off of a central battery and the battery is good for 190 volts. Each time you pull the trigger, it lasts for five seconds and the voltage is 50,000 volts that goes through the probes. And so it's good for 195-second poles. And then once that runs out, you can replace the battery.
It's, it's the probes that are shot out of it? And can you reload those probes and use them?
You can. Cartridges, once, once you expend a cartridge, you have to, it's no longer good, you can't use it again. Because the probes actually cast themselves into the person.
Not officially.
Okay. We have to reload the cartridge. The cartridges we're buying right now are $25 each.
So not only a deterrent, but certainly it's good if you need it to hopefully.
The way I look at it is it's another tool or a less lethal option that we have on our belt to avoid the officer or anybody else getting hurt. And that's the goal with these things, not to intimidate anybody, not to use as an aggressive tool. It's a, it's a tool to keep the officer, the individual that we're trying to arrest, anybody else that may be on hand, from getting hurt. We've had, I know, just two jumping right into the top of my head over the last couple of months. One, an officer did get hurt because we didn't have a taser. And in my heart of hearts, I believe if we had had a taser, we could have avoided that entirely. And another was an incident, we had somebody who was on a lot of different substances, was so messed up that they were jumping through glass. And the officers were trying to control the situation the best they could, and luckily the sheriff's department was on hand at the time. the Sheriff's Department was on hand at the time, and they had tasers. So this individual was brought under control with a taser. Had they not been there, had it been another situation like where the officer got hurt just a couple of months ago, it would have been the very same thing. Because this was an individual who was very fit, very good size, and he was on all these substances, obviously, glass isn't stopping him, it wouldn't have looked good if not the others, and more than likely would have led to injury on both sides.
Safety device for both you and for the part two?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and that's the goal, is, you know, we want to minimize injury across the board. Obviously, for our officers, we want to keep them as safe as possible, but we don't want to cause injury to the person we're trying to arrest either, by having to roll around with them and wrestle with them for five, 10, 15 minutes.
To prevent you from having to take action would be far more serious.
Yes, sir. That's our belief, yes.
Good to meet you.
Any additional questions?
Thank you, man.
Thank you. Next up, Sam, City Engineer.
Well, we did have a sanitary board meeting this afternoon, brief, wouldn't you say?
It was very short, yes.
We did get out before 6:00, but maybe not.
No, I think it was there.
We had some discussion on our NPDS permit appeal. We have engaged an attorney, Aqua Law, out of Richmond, Virginia, that's associated with the Municipal Work Quality Association, which Buckan joined about four or five months ago. And they submitted a statement of principle, which is basically an outlining of the issues and the resolution that we're looking at. And we have probably about five issues, the first of which is the toxic pollutants, the heavy metals, coppers, and particularly, second is the oxygen-demanding parameters, BOD, ammonia, and then the toxicity testing, which they grow either minnows and/or water fleas to see if they can survive and reproduce in our effluent. And there are certain requirements that they imposed on the new permit, which are particularly severe regarding those three things. And those were addressed in this statement of principle. And that was submitted earlier this week. And the idea is that with this statement of principles, that we can negotiate with DEP and resolve our differences and not have to go to a conference and hearing. We also presented the new sewer tap application forms. We'd been having some difficulty, that the old forms were not really providing enough information to the applicant on what our expectations were regarding connection to our sewer. We have standards, and it didn't seem like all the time that the applicants were aware of those standards. And AMBI had the idea that we would actually put our standards on the back of the application form, and I think that will be very effective. We had a DEP compliance sampling inspection about two months ago. Actually, I think I reported on that. About a week ago, we got the report. They seemed pretty positive and enthusiastic, conducting the inspection, and their report didn't reflect that. It was a very positive report. Another matter relative to our new permit are the storm drains, which are fairly minor at the treatment plant. But we've been required not only to test our effluent from the treatment process, but we've got to test the discharge from our storm sewers. And we've had some problem with fecal pole form, and we had to prepare a plan of how we would address that. And there may be, and we kind of emphasize, there may be a couple of housekeeping issues that we can address. But again, the non-compliance or the problems that we have have been pretty erratic. Most of the time, they're satisfactory, and only on a few occasions have they not been. Collection system, we've started work on Mark Avenue, which is at the very end of Victoria, West Victoria Street, up above Highland Drive, at the end of Bogus Street. And it's an older collection sewer that we've had, it's on a steep wooded hillside and very difficult to get to, and we've had some complaints. And if you get a complaint in the winter, very, very difficult, and not performing properly. And we're also another location of extraneous flow. We have begun construction on that upgrade. We talked about replacing a service truck, and we're authorized to proceed to investigate replacement of the truck. We have had to undergo another series of performance tests for the treatment plant, where we get the samples with known values that we have to match. Phil Jenkins and Donald Tenney performed those tests, and they, as usual, did very Another employee, Buck Samples, went to a certification class a couple of weeks ago and passed his Class III certification exam. We are required to have a Class III operator, and Phil Jenkins and I are both Class IV certified, but we're the only two that satisfy our requirements. So Buck still has some education requirements to satisfy, but that will give us a third person that will meet our certification requirements. That's all.
Any questions for Sam? Thank you. Kelly, who's up?
On the plant side, mostly it's been routine. We'll report that we had a class, West Virginia Rule of Water, we usually have those twice a year up there. It helps all the personnel get some continuing education there, it's out traveling, so it's a good trade-off, having our facilities for them to use. And the class actually was on how to deal with public, but we won't get into that too much. Other things, we're continuing to paint fire hydrants. I don't know if any of you caught the news, a week ago, there's another water industry that's applying for grants, and they actually use one of our hydrants that we'd painted on the news, but it's not theirs, that's ours. But we're continuing to paint the fire hydrants, all the large meters, anything over four and above, we have to test annually. And all those have been tested, and they're tested up good, and any repairs made have been made. We're continuing to renew any 5/8 water services. That's just, there's two different types of residential, it's more like a 5/8 and a 5/8 by 3/4. And there's very few of the 5/8 left. And once we get those renewed, then we only have to carry a 5/8 by 3/4 meter instead of the two different types, which I think is a good move. We're still, we're working some on Lumber Street. We've got a little bit of galvanized down there where we need to abandon, and then we're going to have to lay just a little bit of line to pick up one customer there. And we're planning to do some hydrant flushing. We do it twice a year. We're looking at mid-October to start that, right around the 15th. And we'll be flushing until it's all flushed. We usually flush from 8:00 in the morning to 4:30. We've moved some meter barrels on Smithfield Street for the street department, because they're going sidewalks, some of the sidewalks down through there, and they can load a couple of meter barrels in the sidewalks, so we took advantage and moved them up in the grass while they had the sidewalks up. And basically, everything else is routine.
Questions? Kelly?
I have a question on the fire hydrant painting of it. Types of color coded for flow?
For the most part, they are. There's still some that we need to flow test. And as we get the opportunity to flow test, and the reason I say opportunity is, sometimes there's obstacles in the way where we can't really open the hydrant fully to get the flow test done. So yes, the ones that we have flow tested before are color coded on top.
Additional questions? Thank you, Kelly. Before we introduce somebody that needs an introduction, I guess, let me just mention for the Westland students here, you think about the city and what it does. We operate water plant, water's drawn out of the Buchanan River, filtered and cleaned, chemicals added as needed and delivered to you. The sewer system is provided by the city, it's another auxiliary enterprise. We operate the fire department, hope you don't have to need them, but they're there. We do waste collection, garbage collection, trash in the city. It's not local, it doesn't go into a landfill, but it's put on trucks and hauled to landfill up 79 ways. We operate all the city parks and maintain the walk trail, it's near campus. We operate a cemetery, we maintain the cemetery and all of those facilities. Operate a youth center, some of you volunteered to stock it, it's across the street, police, obviously. I'm sure you won't have any occasion to need them. Street department, we handle streets and sidewalks, and that's probably not everything, but that gives you some idea of the range of services that end up coming out of this building and several others, with what, about 85 employees?
Yep.
About 85 employees of the city government and all these auxiliary enterprises. Okay, Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I've been working on a lot of matters the last two weeks, some actually moving forward with some projects that have been on the back burner, moving into the front burner, and other things, just facilitating resolution of some problems. As you know, we've been working toward financing the Armory Project. The city has committed to the federal government in participating to the tune of $750,000. We have been talking with Vince Collins and John Stump with Steptown Johnson, who have previously served as bond counsel for the city on a number of previous projects, to pick their brain for three so far. And they have turned us on to the United States Department of Agriculture, which has some very low interest rate opportunities for us to consider. And I think, perhaps as early as the next meeting, Mr. Doss asked me to, I'll warm you up to this, that he and the mayor will be making a pitch at formalizing some arrangements to pursue some low-interest rate funds through the USDA. So that's an exciting thing that's coming our way. There's another matter relative to the Armory Project that Mr. Holland and I want to take up with you during an executive session this evening, so stay tuned for that one. Our electrical inspection ordinance is coming along. Just Tuesday and Wednesday, Mr. Doss and I have successfully acquired copies electronically of several cities in West Virginia, including Bridgeport, Morgantown, Charleston. None of them are going to be a perfect fit for what we want to do in Buchanan, but I have started to draft the ordinance, might have something ready as early as next meeting. As I see this ordinance unfolding, there's basically going to be four major sections to it. One will identify standards, that is, which codes we're going to be following. Another will have to do with detailing the various kinds of inspections. Until a month ago or so, when we started working on this, I wasn't aware, I don't even know if Mr. Clemens was aware, that there were so many different kinds of electrical inspections, initial service inspections, rough-in inspections, intermediate inspections, final inspections. And then these inspections vary, depending upon whether it's residential, commercial, or industrial properties. We're probably going to be looking at making recommendations to the council of fairly substantially increasing the fees which would be charged for these electrical inspections. Right now, the $10 or $15 fee that is charged at the front counter when people come to do a home improvement or a business improvement, really cannot begin to equate to the cost of having a certified electrical inspector do the work. So it's all about the bang for your buck. Right now, you don't pay very much in these electrical inspections, and in all candor, you really haven't gotten a whole lot for that $10 or $15 fee. I think the fees that we are probably going to be recommending are going to be upwards of $100 or $150 for the total multiple inspections that will occur. But these inspections will be done by a certified electrical inspector, not just an electrician, but a certified electrical inspector. And I think more of it will come into focus as we make this presentation in the next meeting or two. There are also, I think, the group, Mr. Martini, our electrical inspector, Mr. Clemens, Mr. Doss, Mr. Davidson, and myself, we believe that the penalties for non-compliance with electrical inspections needs to be stepped up a lot. In other words, if you have a contractor that should know better, and working with electrical systems and the whole bit, and they just completely ignore our inspection requirements, perhaps we need to have, you know, the first time you do this, Mr. Contractor, it's a $100 fine minimum. Second time, a $300 fine, third time, $500 fine. So more to follow on electrical inspections. There's a matter that goes all the way back to about 1987. Mr. Ludlow may want to chime in with this, and the reason I bring it up tonight is, I'm still weighing whether or not we need to rectify this matter by ordinance or not. But to make a long story as short as possible, Harley Brown, who was then the Public Works Superintendent for the city, and Sam Ludlow and myself sat down with some folks, Willard and Patty Jo Weimer, who resided over on the Vicksburg Road, back in 1987. We were in the process of acquiring a new pump station site, which was in fairly close proximity to an old pump station site. We knew that there wasn't going to be one of these immediate, well, we get the property for the new pump station site from the Weimers, and this other property, which was very close to their property, which we were going to convey to them, it wasn't the case where you just hit a switch and one pump station comes on and the other one goes off. It wasn't that easy. It was a period of years that we phased out the old site, going exclusively to the new site. In the process, we kind of, we got the deed from the Weimers to put in the new pump station site, but we never released the city's rights back to the Weimers relative to the property that had been acquired by the city way back in 1963. We hadn't done that. We never jumped through that hoop of doing the ordinance that authorized the swap. So while it's okay for us to have the property we've got, in order for me to draft the deed to convey this little, and it's about four tenths of an acre of property that's down on the river's edge, back to the Weimers, I'm thinking we probably need to do an ordinance. So more to follow on that one. That's one that I hope to have to you at the next city council meeting. We continue to work on annexation matters. Part of that will be discussed in the executive session under the property litigation matter. What else? Been working with Jerry Arnold on the exciting River Trail expansion. We had a meeting with college and city players just last week. If you haven't been down to the River Trail lately, as you head up toward the Split Row Fence property, there's about a half acre there that the city has leased from West Virginia Westland College, with the new learning trail going in, as well as the workout stations. And that's going to be a very exciting thing as we complete that as well. Been asked to remind folks that we do have, under ordinance 300, a prescription, a restriction from allowing your dogs to bark. We do have an ordinance against that, so those of you who are out there letting your dogs bark all night. One of my friends on Main Street asked me if we still had that ordinance. I said, yes, we do, and could you mention that? So I'm mentioning it, I promised that person that I would. Do you have any questions for me? I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions for Dave?
Mr. McCollough, I've got electrical inspection questions. While you're working on this project, inspections during the development of your project, I'm assuming that your electrical inspector would be going in at certain times and inspecting how the wiring is installed, actually inspecting the hookups and all of that. Now, is there a procedure also for somebody that wants to get an old house rewired, that they would go in and inspect that also during the time period it's being done?
Well, Mr. Clemmons may want to chime in here relative to that question, Mr. Pugh, but at present, there is no state statute, when it comes to an existing residential structure, there is no state statute that requires inspections relative to electrical work, especially with the do-it-yourselfers kinds of thing, people putting in their own, you know, room addition and that kind of stuff. There is no requirement, if you're doing it yourself, for that to be inspected. We are trying to advance the notion with so many of the property owners that do those kinds of things, that, look, this is a good investment for you to pay that $100 inspection fee, have our certified electrical inspector come out and check you and your brother-in-law's work. This is all about safety. That's what the purpose of this ordinance is, is safety first. So while we don't have the ability to mandate it right now, we're trying to advance things to it being highly encouraged for property owners to do those kinds of inspections.
Okay. Are remodeling on a business?
Businesses are different. We have the ability to require inspections, and have we done the best job following up with businesses after they come in and get their $10 or $15 permit? And we haven't done a very good job of following up with that at all. And that's the fact of the matter.
Okay, now, is there perhaps, under new construction, if you find contractors out there that are not complying, is there a possibility of having the power company shut off the power?
If it's an initial service, yes. In fact, the very first inspection on a new structure, not one that's being refurbished, but a new structure, new service, those inspections aren't being done by the city. Those are referred to the power company, and they do that first preliminary inspection. And it's up to the power company as to whether they're going to turn on the power to that particular new structure or not. That's not a call of the city or even the city's electrical inspector.
I noticed that when I worked in Ohio, I sold a lot of electrical permit forms and everything like that. There were cities and counties in Ohio that had 50 forms for inspectors to fill out, and it seems like their fees were not hundreds, but thousands of dollars to get electrical service put in. And we don't have any at all.
We have been looking at different grade structures for residential properties versus commercial industrial properties. And we were throwing out, what if somebody came in and built a 50,000 or a 100,000 square foot addition? What? Well, think about how big that property is and how many different facets, how many different, you know, places where you put a light bulb or you can plug something in that need to be checked by this electrical inspector. That person could spend a couple of days at that site doing these inspections, and you wouldn't want that to occur.
That's strictly a safety issue.
And if this person typically, in their private world, is charging $60 or $70 an hour to clients, how are we going to justify that by charging a small fraction of that to have the city do that? So as we get into these bigger structures, there is possibility, as we advance this ordinance, that, yeah, we'll be saying yes. You city council folks will be saying yes to possibly having some people have to pay thousands of dollars for electrical inspection.
Well, what do you do, David, about, for example, the college, when you have a new residence hall, performing arts center, science?
There is no immunity. There are no exceptions, no exemptions relative to electrical inspections when it comes to those kinds of structures, Mr. Clemmons.
But have we actually inspected those facilities?
Well, have we? Have we? I defer to Mr. Clemmons relative to some of the past three or four new structures that the college has realized in the last four or five years. I know the state fire marshal does a very thorough walkthrough, including an electrical inspection component to their work, but relative to the city as an inspector, I'm not so sure that that's the case.
We require a copy of what the state fire marshal has reported, yeah. Educational facilities, commercial facilities are all inspected by the state fire marshal in addition to the city in some cases, but educational facilities in particular are inspected by the state fire marshal.
I think it's important, because I know in 1985, David, the Camden Avenue apartment complex, the, we were not in compliance with state code, and we had to put an extra half million dollars on that facility. And, you know, if you recall, there was a lawsuit from New Hampshire College against the architect in Blossom that had a cookie cutter design, and all the structures that they built were not in compliance with state codes. And sometimes you assume that a large institution's going to be in compliance with a lot of stuff, but they're not because of the contractor.
Well, the two things that I can underscore enough about our advancing, albeit more slowly, I think, than what we wanted to, we want to be very careful with how we do this. It's, safety is what's driving this. And this is not something, while the fees invariably will end up being increased over what they are now. Number one, we haven't paid very much for those things. And number two, you've gotten virtually nothing for that $10 or $15. This isn't revenue driven. This isn't a hidden tax or anything. This is something that is going to be very related to the time of a person that's very experienced and has this expertise to do certified inspections. It's to cover that cost, not to further create a revenue stream for the city.
Again, it's for safety.
Absolutely, safety first.
And it follows a number of changes in state code in terms of electrical inspections, and probably building codes are very close behind, so.
We've not done any serious revisitation of our electrical and building codes since the late 80s, shortly after we did our ordinance 244, which is our latest comprehensive city zoning ordinance that went into effect, I think it was January of 89. I think we did a couple of ordinances thereafter, having to do with building and electrical stuff, maybe in 1990 or so, but since then, we've just kind of plugged along using that same old stuff, and it's time to look at many things in a better way.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Council members, now, you, we had a letter and discussion last week from Bannon Incorporated. I closed my response to their request, and I have heard, also made a request that was from Consul, basically, to have them come and make the presentation. I have not had any other contact, either written, or phone calls, or email, or anything from the firm since that time. Probably miscommunication here, but we also got a request in for the BU Homecoming Parade, which has already happened, but just to make sure it's documented, it's in your packet as well. That brings us to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes for September 6th, approval of building and wiring permits, approval of payment of bills, approval of the floodplain report, which Ambi can speak to if you have questions. To set trick-or-treat night for 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Wednesday, October 31st. We have also a request to use Jawbone Park for a Halloween party following the trick-or-treat by the Moose. Request for a 5K event on October 6th by Pet Door Rescue. This was actually approved sometime ago, but they have moved the time, the date and the time. So it's now kind of a second request here to do it on October 6th rather than their initial date. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda?
It's been moved.
Second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brings us down to comments and announcements. This guy pressed this week.
In our vacation for a bit in the first part of September, came back and noticed that our stop signs and four-way blinkers are up and functioning on Main Street. Comments that I've received to date, and I have a feeling personally, is that the traffic does seem to flow a bit better. Really have not heard any severe negative comments, other than, how come they did that? From my colleague next to me, Mr. Pugh, he's had some comments about people having difficulty crossing the street. I would refer those people who have difficulty crossing the street to our esteemed police department, who has won AAA Platinum Award for going on almost a decade based on vehicular and pedestrian safety. And the police officers in residence would be more than happy to assist in refreshing people how to safely cross the street. Sometimes it's frustrating when people complain about things. It's like brushing your teeth, folks. You just got to learn a new way to do it. Or if you're, it just frustrates some things that come up. But I do think that the lights are blinking out there, and I think traffic is eased, I guess congestion is eased, and I would just ask people to be patient, both if you're on foot and in your car, to be observant when you enter an intersection, on foot or in car, because people are learning something new. And sometimes it is difficult to teach old dogs new tricks. And good to be back in Sunny Buck.
Can I respond to that, Rich, a little bit?
Well, I'll let you do that.
Is that okay?
Wait till I get my turn?
Yeah.
All right.
Well, may not give you the last word, but it'll be close.
We'll see.
Right. Oh, those darn lights, I tell you. Look, the comments that I've got of all, I've not received one positive comment about the lights, although I do stress what is positive about them. The fact is that I have such an easier time getting up and down Main Street in these two blocks down. You go through the stops a lot faster than you would have at any other time. I don't have to wait on Spring Street now for five minutes when there's no traffic coming either way. The one main problem I've heard about is the one here at City Hall with the left hand and the straight ahead lanes. People comment, so why don't they just do away with one or the other? And I'd say, well, it would have to be a left hand with them, because we can't do away with the right-hand lane to go straight through. But I think that's a problem. Matt, I don't know how you feel about that one, but I sat there this evening, and a truck here and a car beside it, and the one wanting to turn left had no idea when to turn. And I think that's one that could be redressed right there. The other comment I have is not about that, it's about the Stell Building. Somebody asked me this week, well, it's down, where are they going to haul away? So I just wanted to bring that up, because I told them I would. They're happy that it's down, but they wondered when it's going to be all cleaned up and hauled away.
Their permit would allow them maximum of six months.
Six months? Well, it may take that long.
Yeah, it might.
Long and break at a time. Took that. Both foot.
Anything else, Matt?
No, that's it. Thank you.
David?
Want to skip Pam?
No, no.
Work back up this way. Well, in respect to the blinking lights and the stop signs on Main Street, I've received some negative comments, but the one that concerns me, a couple that concern me the most, and I feel I'm sort of embarrassed that I didn't think about this earlier, is that people that are physically challenged are having some difficulty in regard to crossing the street. For example, if you're blind and have a guide dog, it presents a problem. And I'm very concerned about it. I'm not sure what we should do right now. I have suggested to several people that have guide dogs and are having issues, they need to come to city council, write a letter and so forth, but, you know, people that are physically challenged want to keep their independence. They want to be able to do things without relying on other individuals. So when we're putting somewhat of an obstacle to that, I think it's something that the city needs to take a serious look at. We don't have a lot of compliance with ADA requirements for a lot of our different sidewalks in town and so forth, and I think people can pretty understand it. For a small town, we don't have a lot of resources to do things. But I think the traffic flow is better for people in a car, but it's not better for people that are relying on guide dogs and other means of wheelchairs or walkers and so forth. So I think it's something that we need to be concerned about. I don't have a recommendation right now, but I wish I'd thought about that when we had talked about this a long time ago. I didn't think about that. I've never had a guide dog myself, and I didn't get one because my kids want me to have one, but there's such high demand, and I'm an old person, I don't think I need one now. Give it to the younger people that can use it more effectively. But I think it's something we need to be aware of, and I will talk about it some more and see the individuals. I was hoping they'd be here tonight to make some comments, but they're not, but I want to speak on their behalf. But think about the, I think there's an overall lack of sensitivity with a lot of people that if you have a cane or a guide dog, people are impatient, it seems like today, where they're on their cell phone or eating a cheeseburger or drinking their coffee, and they just don't pay as much attention. And I think a lot of people don't realize what the protocol is when you come to a four-way stop. And I think that's a real problem. And, you know, we haven't had a fatality yet in our pedestrian area, but I'm worried that somebody may get in.
Pam?
Well, all I've heard is negative. I've not heard anything positive about it, and what I hear is, why do you want to fix something that's not broke? And I agree with Dave, we never thought of the fact that we do have some blind people that do have dogs. And he's right, people don't know the protocol when they come to the stop signs. And then another problem is, I think people are starting to forget too. They stop for the two here that's blinking, get down to the third one, and they think, well, nobody's coming, I can go ahead. You know, that's, people are thinking that too. So I don't think it's going to be the best solution for what we have downtown. I really don't. And I really hope we don't wait six months to decide to either keep it or get rid of it. So that's all I have to say, is that everybody's been negative about it.
Yeah. Jay?
I just wanted to add a little something on the Army National Guard. Reported two weeks ago that they were rebidding the project. They opened the rebids up last Thursday, and they were under budget. They made some cutbacks to the infrastructure. Most of it was on the mechanical side, but this directed more towards Mr. Thomas, but there have been no cutbacks on the conference center, you know, and so that's good to report. No square footages, no amenities were taken away, but they, I don't recall the firm's name right offhand nor the price, but the project did come in under bid, and it's going to go.
About the outside of the facility?
None of that was changed. So that's what I'm saying, they found a little bit of extra funding, but then it came in under budget. I think they took some proprietary mechanical equipment away so that more people on that side could bid on it and was able to bring it in under budget.
Still have the period lighting and so forth?
As far as I know, Mr. Thomas, yes. You know, I won't have the official bid results until sometime next week, but I want to pass that along, so I'm afraid that's going to be proceeding.
I will note that I have also received a number of negative comments. My biggest concern beside pedestrians is people don't stop. Don't even come close to a stop sometimes. And that's actually, I've noticed that even when we had the lights operating, it's traffic lights both directions, particularly right turn, left turners don't yield to pedestrians. In my mind, as long as the pedestrians are crosswalking, they certainly have the right of way, no matter whether they're sighted or not, or in a scooter chair, whatever it happens to be, they have the absolute right of way. And I see an awful lot of motors. You can watch this intersection out here on the camera. It's on the web, and you can just see time and time again the number of people that don't even come close to a
don't even come close to a full stop. And, you know, may not even slow down. They just, they don't see any cars, so they just keep going. And that's not what that sign means. I have a granddaughter that's taking her driver's lesson. I got a copy of the driver's handbook, looked it up, and it's very clear in there as to what you do and what you don't do. And that would solve a lot of the problems, if people would just pay attention. And it's not just these four-way stops. We've got lots of four-way stops in this city, and you need to come to a stop period. I've come around the corner at, on South Locust, where you're going past Franklin Street, where it comes out. I've seen people just fly out of the street, just take a right, go right on down. And there's a perfectly good stop sign, very readable, just don't even begin with it. Only other item I have, or a couple items I have, is that we had a ceremony this morning for West Virginia Breast Cancer Awareness Day and Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Bring that to your attention. There's a proclamation in your packet, I probably have some photographs, there's papers as a result of that as well. But very important, and we thank the people that are involved in that. The only other thing is, when I was trying to scratch down a list of all the things the city does, I forgot to me one of the most important, that's the city library. Well, the library that's between City Hall and the college is not exactly what Wesleyan students would think of as a research library. It's more of a pleasure reading for kids and so on. But I know lots of children spend hours and hours in there over the years in terms of, it's a wonderful library for the community, so we operate that as well. Anyone else have any other items?
Yeah, Rich, I have one more comment. I don't think it's appropriate that we have to wait for six months to have Richard and Tucker Street cleaned up.
Well, I'm not saying it's appropriate, but I'm saying that's what the permit does a lot.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that went on that, you know, I think we ought to have some capability of pushing that much faster.
I will contact the owner tomorrow.
And, you know, we need to do that. We have really been patient on that whole process, and I think we've been taking advantage of that to some degree. And I think it's inappropriate that we, you know, we need to do something aggressively with that now. It's down, and let's get it hauled away.
Okay.
Full agreement.
All right. Could you give us a report next Thursday at 3:00 PM on that?
Oh, I've got a long list for next Thursday.
Okay, good, sure. See you then.
Anything else?
I have a comment on the stoplight situation.
All right.
And I don't know how the operation of is. If they went through four or five cycles of blinking lights, if you had a sign that would drop down for all four directions that says stop, and you had chimes, the person would know that they could go across the street. Now, they do not know. They have no idea when they can cross the street, which I'm sure that he can justify to.
I agree.
But we need some chimes, we need something to make sure that the traffic does stop.
If I'm not mistaken, this intersection and the courthouse intersection both have, or did have, walk lights.
Do they have audible sounds?
Don't believe they have audible sounds, and maybe the one at the courthouse does. It's, usually don't try to walk that intersection, because that's a hard intersection to walk just because of its size. It is very hard. Even though it does go red all four directions, that doesn't mean everybody stops all four directions. But we can certainly look into that, and I think we'll have to refer all these comments to the street department and see what the process is.
Need some chimes or bells or something to let everybody know.
Well, we see, we need to find out what you need to be in compliance with the ADA requirements.
Right.
And, you know, we're probably not in compliance. And whatever we need to do, we need to make sure we are, and if we can't do it, then we got to go back to the other systems.
Well, the one reason that these two intersections went to four-way stops was because the traffic counts on those two intersections were sufficient that the state code did not require a traffic light. But the intersection at Canawha was busy enough that it did require a traffic light. So, you know, people have asked why two and not the third one, or, you know, what that difference was. That was state determination, not our determination. It was not our request. Our original request was to do all three of them. And that request was made a couple of years ago. Took a long time.
Anything else? Last call. Okay, we still have on the agenda an executive session. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Second. Motion to, has been made and seconded to enter executive session. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Clemmons, I would observe that I would not anticipate the council taking any action.